Good evening, Happy New Year, and welcome to the January 11th Meeting of the Newport News City Council. If you wish to speak with us tonight or would like to address council, please register with the staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I if the matter, the item that you wish to address is not on the agenda, and it is germane to the business of council. We have a light system on our podium. At the end of your giving, your name and address, the green light will appear. At the end of two minutes, the yellow light, and at the end of three minutes, the red light, and we ask that you promptly take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would please silence your phones. And prior to the beginning of the business portion of the meeting, we're going to ask Pastor Raleigh Holliday with Mana Church will provide the invocation to city council. Afterwards, Councilman Jenkins will lead us in the pledge. Now, it is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but you are under no obligation to do so. Pastor.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. Let us pray together. Gracious and eternal God, we first and foremost want to acknowledge your presence here with us this evening. We thank you for this opportunity to gather, to exercise our rights as citizens in order to further your well-done for the city of Newport News. So we want to take this opportunity just to ask you for a divine flow. I pray that there would be a collaborative effort between the citizens and the council members to move things forward towards your agenda. So we give grace and favor, want to speak blessing over our mayor and over every council member and every citizen of the city of Newport News, and in this, we ask in your gracious name. Amen.
Thank you. Please start being the pledge.
Interventions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate that. Before we get into tonight's agenda, we have a quick video to show. Hopefully, we will be successful. We may not hear it in the, in here. We just wanted to share with you some of the excitement we had during the holidays. The city looked beautiful. We're going to make some more comments about that at the end, but we want to thank the city and all the departments that were helpful in making this happen. We had a lot of positive comments from our citizens about this, so once again, we want to thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to have a motion excusing Councilwoman Scott from the meeting.
Move on. Second.
Moved in second. Please call the roll.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Okay, we are now at the public hearings part of the agenda. We're going to start with first item, page four, item E1, which is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number CU 2021-009 to Richmond Property Holdings LLC to allow for the operation of an automobile body and paint shop on 2.37 acre parcel located at 529 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard, Zone M1 Light Industrial. The proposed use will utilize an existing vacant structure previously used as a metal fabrication shop. All work will be performed within the building with no outside storage, inoperable vehicles allowed. The request is consistent with the recommendations of the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and compatible with the surrounding industrial uses. On December the first, 2021, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously six-zero to recommend approval of this request with condition. The city manager recommends approval, and we have Mr. Tim Trant here if we have any questions. Did you want to make a statement, Mr. Trant? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Page thirty-five, item E2, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment number ZT 2021-003, amending and reordaining city code chapter forty-five zoning ordinance, Article II, definitions, section forty-five dash two oh one, definitions of certain words and terms, to clarify the definition of commercial parking lot and add definitions of off-site parking lot and truck stop. The proposed zoning text amendment provides a differentiation of the two types of commercial parking lots based on the size and type of the vehicle. It provides a definition for an off-site parking lot and introduces a definition for truck stop. On December the one of this, of 2021, the City Planning Commission voted five to one to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment number ZT 2021-003. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move the motion.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Is this for any particular one, or is this just the clarification of the, of the language? I mean, is this for a particular lot?
No, it's not. It's to clarify the language and define, further define things, refine the definitions.
Okay, but it's not for any particular one?
No.
Because I couldn't find where it was.
No, it's not for a particular place.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Page forty-six, item E3, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment number ZT 2021-004, amending and reordaining city code chapter forty-five zoning ordinance, Article IV, summary of uses by district, section forty-five dash forty four oh two, summary of uses by district by amending permanent, permitted uses L transportation to amend commercial parking lots and truck stop. The proposed amendment will stipulate in which districts commercial parking lots for small motor vehicles, commercial parking lots for large motor vehicles, and truck stops will be allowed. On December the first of 2021, the City Planning Commission vied five to one to recommend approval of the proposed zoning text amendment number ZT 2021-dash-triple-zero-four. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move the motion.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please. Any discussion first?
Well, yeah, real quick, can you explain how this would impact our truck drivers and their trucks in regards to parking, because in our district is a lot of that on industrial drive?
Yes, sir. This text amendment will allow the operation, or the creation, I should say, of a commercial truck parking lot, or commercial parking lot for a large vehicle on industrial property, light industrial property or heavy industrial property. So this opens up the door, so to speak, to allow for that use to occur in industrial areas, on private property, with the hope that with that ability, you will remove them off the city streets.
All right. And I'm quite sure we're going to have to be more aware of, I don't know if aware is the right word, but as so many people now are buying those huge trucks because it's lucrative, lucrative business for them, so I can see that being something that we want to really look at throughout the city for our future.
That's the thought, yes.
Thank you. Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Page fifty-seven, item E4, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment number ZT 2021-005, amending and reordaining city code chapter forty-five zoning ordinance regarding several articles related to the application process for conditional use permits, variances, special exceptions, and change of regulations. The proposed amendment seeks to clarify the application processes. On December one of 2021, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously six-zero to recommend approval of zoning text amendment number ZT 2021-005. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have some discussion, Mr. Mayor. On this, I know we're, with the changes, I wanted to find out, or can we just make clarity for the public, will there be any type of advertising or information out to the public about the changes?
The public hearing has been advertised.
No, I'm saying, because I'm thinking, right, as we're, as we're voting for this, for the changes.
Will the public be?
Will the public be able to notify of the changes?
Well, it'll be published in the city ordinance. I mean, the city code gets published. So the code changes will be published, which means that what it's doing is it's clarifying what they need to do to continue a matter before it gets to planning commission. Let's say they're on a planning commission docket, and they want to defer it. Instead of taking the chance, having to have all their people at planning commission and taking the chance that it might not get deferred, they can pay a deferral fee and get it deferred before it comes up. The deferrals at city council will still be based on the applicant asking the majority of city council to agree to defer something.
So everything is still, they'll get the information from, I was just thinking that not a lot of people just go look at the ordinances. Would, is there some way the public would be aware?
The information that you're seeing today is already in the ordinance. This is clarifying it to ensure that people understand that the deferral that's in the ordinance refers to deferral at planning commission. And the planning, at planning commission, you get to defer prior to the meeting, and therefore, it doesn't move forward. But you can also take it to the meeting, and at the meeting, you can also request deferral. But any request of deferral, there's a fee. There's a current fee now, and that continues with this amendment. So this is clarification.
Okay, so the current fee is, I mean, this is the current fee?
The current fee has, has increased to $400. The fee right now is like 250.
Yeah. See, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so you would, a person would have to go to the ordinance to be able to find this out. Is it printed in your office anywhere, or, you know, because I'm just thinking for a person who may want to get in this process.
It is part, is part of the application. If you come in and you apply for a rezoning or a conditional use permit or a special exception, it is part of the application and the written procedure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Page one oh seven, item E5, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to convey a portion of city-owned property located near the intersection of Lucas Creek Road and Old Lucas Creek Road to the Hampton Road Sanitation District. City council adopted ordinance number 7741-dash-21 on October the 12th of 2021, which vacated a portion of an unapproved easement of right-of-way. The vacation resulted in an adjacent 2,084 square foot remainder of property owned by the city of Newport News. It is requested that city council adopt an ordinance to convey this portion of the city-owned property along with the 6,565 square foot adjacent parcel to the Hampton Road Sanitation District. The conveyance is necessary for HRSD to construct a wastewater pump station to improve service in the area and eliminates the city need to construct a new pump station. The city manager recommends approval. I see that there are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
We are now at the consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page one thirteen, minutes of the special meeting of December the fourteenth. Page one seventeen, minutes of the work session of December the fourteenth. Page one fifty-three, minutes of the regular meeting of December the fourteenth. Page one eighty-five, a resolution in memoriam for Woodrow M. Brown, Jr., resolution of memoriam for Flora Crittington, for William E. Fitzgerald, and Mary Sherwood Holt. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items F1 through F7, all inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Okay, so there have been no other city council actions submitted for this evening. Is that correct? Good. We are now at appropriations, page two oh one, item H. Madam Enner.
Yes, we have three appropriation resolutions. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $100,000 from the Newport News Police Department asset forfeiture funds for specialized police equipment. The second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $100,000 from the local criminal justice training academy fees to pay for specialized training and supplies for the Newport News Police Department. And the third is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $4,170,452.99 in federal funds for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, state and local fiscal recovery funds funding to support the COVID-19 Municipal Utility Assistance Program for the city of Newport News Water Works Department, and I recommend approval of all three resolutions.
Is there a motion to approve items H1 through H3, all inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Yeah. Has that money already been allocated?
The four million?
Uh-huh.
No, it has not.
No, so that is, that's not part of the cares thing?
No, it will be applied. This is a separate.
Separate part of money?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries six-zero.
Okay, we are now at citizen comments. I will call the names as presented to me. Diane Umstead. Good evening.
City councilmembers. Mayor Price. I am Diane Umstead. I am a volunteer for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, and I am a part of the Peninsula affiliate. I'm also on the Community Violence Prevention Team, and we work with multiple community partners, some of whom are here tonight to introduce themselves to you. Anna Walner is with Hand in Hand, which is a hospital violence intervention program, and she was unable to be here tonight, so I'm going to speak on her behalf so you can learn a little bit more about the hospital intervention programs and the one specifically here. So you've probably heard the statistic that in 2020, 30% of the increase, there was a 30% increase in homicides across the country, the biggest one-year increase over a century. Many due to firearms, and those resulted in deaths. 1.5 million are treated for assaults in the emergency departments every year, and they're typically discharged as patients even though they might be going back into a violent situation. So, as you know, and kudos for the work session, by the way, that this violence affects us all, and it can cause significant physical injuries and mental health disorders with an increase in chronic diseases. Clearly, public health has a responsibility to reduce the health burden of youth violence, and it is up to community leaders and partners to work hand in hand to apply what they know already to reduce the risk for complex health problems and take action to reduce youth violence. So the emergency room, this particular type of project, actually presents a unique opportunity to connect with the victims of violence, and it is a type of intervention that helps them when they go back into the environment to have the tools to be safe and the potential to not have retaliatory behaviors. Right now, Newport News has the Hand in Hand program at Riverside Regional Medical Center. It is funded through a grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services until June of 2023. And there's that yellow button. This is known as a hospital-based violence intervention program. I think I'll just fast-forward through her pages, and she's also sent you all a written copy of this, but she says here, "Freeing Newport News from violence requires changing the systems and conditions that contribute to violence. We must have commitment and cooperation from all types of leaders across all sectors to have that long-term impact that we seek." And Newport News has a distinctive opportunity to place prevention and intervention into the forefront of the work that we do here in the community. There are so many programs, you're going to hear from a few more tonight. I think I'll just end with Anna's words. "We want these programs to be a staple in our community with trustworthy partners and providers, and for you to see us, both volunteers and programs like Hand in Hand at Riverside, as a place that can help you and help our city solve some of the violence and gun violence that is affecting us all." Thanks for your time.
Let me ask you a question. That'll give you more time.
Sure. Oh, well, you know. Oh, well, you know.
So what do they do at the hospital? Do they counsel them, or do they take the guns away from them, or what?
No, actually, and I think Anna would obviously, obviously be the better one to speak to this, and you can read her full document because she did send it to you. But basically, they are working with the person on the types of coping skills that they can have to go, because many of them are going back into the situation, even though they may have been treated for the trauma. And I think a lot of it has to do with both the mental health skills and social emotional learning that we know has to take place so that people have the tools that they need in their toolbox. And then looking at family intervention around what that trauma may have done to the whole family or to the neighborhood for that matter. And so Hand in Hand, Riverside Medical Center.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Cameron Bertrand. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How y'all doing today? My name is Cameron Bertrand. Unfortunately, I've had the pleasure of meeting each and every one of you on this council. I'm the CEO of Violence Intervention and Prevention, VIP LLC. I'm also the founder of Buy Back the Block. I'm a mental health counselor. I'm a sociologist and graduate from Christopher Newport University. I'm a U.S. veteran, the U.S. Army. I've also done a lot of work right here in Newport News, and most importantly, for this particular matter, I'm a gun violence survivor. So unfortunately for myself, I was shot in Norfolk, November 7, 2015. It's something that I'm still currently recovering from, and it is still something I'm currently constantly exposed to through urban traumatic stress disorder and things that we currently, currently see in our communities. I ran for office here at Newport News, 2020. I've been a part of a lot of the work that we're currently doing right here in Newport News, and I wanted to come up here and just kind of speak on some of the work that we've been seeing done even today from the session that took place at Don and Gross. And I wanted to just bring a gentle reminder and hopefully know that those grassroots-oriented organizations that have been doing the work here in this city, we are here to help. We are here to be a part of that solution. I wanted to make sure that even though this is a burden to carry, every day I leave my crib, I live right there, I can walk outside and throw a rock in my apartment from this front door. That's how close I live, and it is a burden to carry to go out and know that a lot of our young people are still being at risk to some of the things that I'm still healing from. And it's hard work, and I know that a lot of the data we talk about, I specialize in that. It's hard, and to go into communities and collect data and to make sure to bring outcome-driven, evidence-based solutions to the table, it takes a lot of work, a lot of sustainability, a lot of resources that we need, and this equity that we're asking for has been something we've been asking for for quite some time. And coming into these rooms, I wish we were under better circumstances, but I am tired. And even though I want to be a part of this solution, I don't think this is something I should have to wake up and do every day, but I know if I don't, I'm not sure who else will. And I know that the people sitting up here, each and every one of you, care about this city. You wouldn't be here. You wouldn't be here if you didn't. So I ask you to always remember that this is something that we want to be a part of, that are people like myself who have lived through something that we have seen so many people pass away from. And it is extremely hard, so with the work that we're doing, we do need evidence-based, outcome-driven, grassroots-oriented approaches to make sure that the trauma-informed solutions that we're asking for always keep people like ourselves and the other people in our communities that are at risk of the violence, we can keep them out of harm's way, and we could begin this healing process that's been needed for far too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna Rivers.
Hello, everyone. How you doing tonight? I'm with the Heav Foundation. We started this group in remembrance of my brother who was killed on October 2018. We also give back to the community through different fundings, different projects, excuse me, and this, on the 15th, we have an event coming up to give back to the homeless as well as life skill classes that we take, that we do to help the community learn how to do their resumes. We also, sorry.
Sorry, take your time.
We also give back to the community on Thanksgiving and Christmas to low-income families that do not have the money to provide for their kids for Christmas and Thanksgiving. We are a nonprofit organization, and all of our funding through donations, and we started this organization because we wanted to give back to the community to let everyone know that violence is not the answer, and as well as teaching the youth that you can use your anger towards better, you can use your anger towards drawing, you can use your anger towards basketball, you can use your anger towards many things besides violence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in case either of those two groups have to leave, I want to make sure that you give your contact information to Assistant City Manager, Mr. Allen, if he'd raise his hand, make sure that we have your contact information as we begin this process. Thank you. Ruth Winters.
Hello, I'm Ruth Winters. I'm a citizen of Newport News, and I'm very happy to be here with you guys. I am also the local group lead of Peninsula Area Moms Demand Action for Guns Sense in America. I was at the meeting this afternoon and appreciate very much the discussion. That's what I was looking forward to hearing. I'm really excited to hear that you see the value in what these community-based groups can do and help this. They're only one part of the, of the solution to this problem, but they are a big part, and they are already doing this work. One of the things that I would like to ask that you consider is, I did not hear anything about the use of the ARPA funds for this area, so I'm hoping that that is something that you will continue to think about and...
Could you say that again? Could you say that again?
The ARPA funding.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, so if you all can, you know, keep us in the loop, we're really very interested in hearing what's going to be developing, and congratulate you all, and are looking forward to partnering with you in anything that we can get done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What was your group's name?
We are the Peninsula Area Moms Demand Action for Guns Sense in America. It's a national group.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Winters also wants to thank you for sending the email.
Oh, sure.
That was very helpful information, and as I read through it, a lot of the things that they have, we, we have done as an initiative for the city of Newport News. I was happy to read it and say, you know what? I think we're doing that, but maybe we can do it better. So thank you so much for the information.
I hope that we continue to develop those things. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Jane Alberg.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Jean Aubourg, and I am, I am the CEO of ITM 2000 Startup LLC. My company is developing a platform to give law enforcement a leg up on these mass shootings, okay? So the way the platform works is you, you will walk through a portal, and then artificial intelligence will vet you, will vet you as to what kind of objects that you, you have on you, in your backpack, in your purse, or in your pocket. Now, once that done, AI will tag you from, from a white tag to a magenta tag. Magenta tag, you are a threat, and AI will dispatch some three-by-three drone, three-inch by three-inch drone, and these drones are lethal, and they will circle you and stop you at any cost. So my question is, is, is this city going to partner with us to make sure these things get into the schools, the churches, the banks, the hotels, and everywhere else they might need it? Any questions?
Do you have a vicinity now where you're, or a section or locality now where you're successful?
You're asking about TRL, what is our technology readiness level?
Your what?
Our technology, technology readiness level.
Okay.
We are the number four now, which means that, that we need test beds to actually validate the platform.
Okay, thank you.
Can you...
Any more questions?
Yes, is it, this is the first time I've heard of your organization.
Yes, yes.
So you're asking us to partner with you, but we know absolutely, me personally, I don't know anything about who you are or your business.
That's good.
So if you would please send us some information.
I will.
So that we can be informed, so that we can be on the same sheet of music as you're talking to us.
I sure will.
That we can have a conversation.
I sure will.
Because it's hard to have a conversation if you don't have information.
I sure will. I got a pamphlet here, you can see, and, and...
So I think all of us would be happy to have any information you have.
I have a second one, but I didn't know all these were here. But the mayor has one.
We all need it.
Yeah, I know.
We all have one vote, so we all need to have a copy.
Yeah, I give you one at Heritage Visual.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, in conclusion, law enforcement is the tip of despair when these, these situations happen, and, and the tip doesn't have any power without the shaft, and you guys are the shaft. Okay, so let's get behind the tip to make sure these things don't happen, and we don't lose any more lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Hall.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. As we watch our democracy being challenged daily, we, the people of the Southeast community, are determined to fight for its preservation. We continue to speak against the moving of Huntington from its current location. People are contacting me outraged and want to know what the justification is for this decision. Community input from 2018 was referenced, but that did not include moving the school. One person said, "We don't want our footprint to be erased. Our children need to feel a connection to the community. We need to teach the history and stop rewriting it. Democracy is never about one person, but the will of the people." Thank you.
Thank you. Shakita Hubbard. Good evening.
I'm Shakita Hubbard. I'm a citizen of Newport News. I'm the founder of Living with Disability, and I want to let you know that home for Newport, home for me and always will be Newport News. I love thinking back on my childhood where, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
No?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna start back. I'm Shakita Hubbard. I'm the founder of Living with Disabilities. I'm a citizen of Newport News, and I want y'all to know that this is home for me. It always has been and always will be. When I think back in my childhood, it was a good time for me because I was able to have cookouts and playing in the neighborhood with my friends. I was naive to the violence around me, but now I can't escape it. I feel like there's multiple shootings that results in deaths of children, fathers, mothers, and our friends, and I feel like we're all citizens who might have the right to bear arm, but we don't have the right to end people's lives and have the rest of us living in fear. I plead that we come up with a type of public strategy that allows individuals accessible resources that can help them to cope with life tragedies, because we can't escape those either. I hope that we can help our citizens acquire skills and credentials that will help them to have skill, to help them to be productive individuals. I think we need recreational outlets, not just for those that are in school, but for those that are disabled as well. I think that we need that so that we can all be productive, compassionate individuals, not turning into criminals or homeless individuals. That's a whole nother story. But I think that everybody has an excuse, everybody has a story, but regardless of that, we have to be resourceful, and only what we're going to do there is by coming together. My group has a proposal that we have been trying to get everyone to take heed of. It's called PTA, not the one everybody thinks about in school, but people teach all, because that's what we're all up here telling you, that we have something that we can help one another with, and I feel like that's something that we need to do. I feel like we live in a world, we share the world that we're living in, and we have to come together as the people to come up with a solution that we're going to all be able to live and thrive in this world happily. I thank y'all for y'all's time and y'all's service.
Thank you.
Adrian Cook.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have two pamphlets that can be passed around and kept, and I can also send them via email. My name is Adrian Cook, and I'm with the Organization of 82 Solutions. The first time I came here and I talked about stopping the violence, I came from a novice standpoint and didn't understand of giving information out to y'all so y'all know what I do and who I am and the organization that I have. So when I come today, I wanted to be able to give y'all some information on who I am, what I do, and, and, and how I can help stop the violence that we see going on in this community. I too am a victim of gun violence. I was shot when I was 15 years old, and I also was one of these kids and teenagers and young adults who enacted violence also. And I went to prison for 18 and a half years for selling drugs because I failed through the school, the prison pipeline. And while I was away, I wanted to mature and figure out, where did I go wrong? And how is it that people who actually tried to help me, because people did try to help me, where did they go wrong in not being able to be effective in that? And that's where I came up with my concept, and I actually put together a curriculum, and I have a workbook and everything for it in the program, and a four-part prong to it where we can get the community to just, you know, refer somebody that comes, but also their students start to get in trouble on a day-to-day basis, and they keep getting in trouble. Well, what do we do with those kids? Bring them to the program, and then we can change their mindset and kind of restore them. And then we have the third prong, which is when they start to catch cases out here that's not serious, where they have to go to detention, what do we do with them? Well, let's have a diversion program and send them to the program where we can change the way that they think also, because very seldom is a child who commits murder first, first charge murder. Usually, there's some, some signs that's showing that he was going into the trajectory, but what do we have in place that can change the way this child is thinking or this young adult is thinking and get them to think from a different standpoint, using conflict resolution, teaching them that you don't have to fight and/or use guns to be a man, showing them that who they are as people. A lot of us have an identity crisis, and I don't have enough time to really get into it, but if we were able to sit, sit down, we could really have a conversation, but a lot of us have an identity crisis, and we're not taught what men is supposed to be like. So now, when our culture tells us from the music and from games that it's shooting and, and fighting, that's all they have to attach to. We're exposing them to something different and showing them that there's a different route, showing them that you don't have to be a man, you don't have to shoot somebody to be a man, giving them financial literacy, you know, things of this nature. Like, I know guys who come home from prison, they go get a good job, and they will absolutely find a way to destroy that, to go back to their old lifestyle, not because they really want to go back to their old lifestyle, but because that's all they identify with. Thank you.
But Adrian, let me ask you, when you said that a lot of groups tried to help you, can you pick one particular thing that, that, was it their identity that made you not want to listen, or what, can you pick one or two things that, for yourself?
There's two things that stand out to me, and I'll make this real quick. One, they never asked me why I was doing the things that I was doing, so they could never take away from me and replace it with something. And two, I always felt like, you don't know what I'm going through.
Right.
And when I feel like you don't know what I'm going through, then I feel like you don't really understand what I'm going through, so I don't want to hear what you have to say. So the two things that I do that's been very, very effective when I'm out here talking So the two things that I do that's been very, very effective when I'm out here talking to these kids is, one, I ask them, why are they doing the things that they're doing? That way I can ask them, let me get that gun or let me get those drugs and replace it with something else to get them that same feeling that they're looking for. And two, I tell them my story. I tell them I was molested by my father. I tell them I seen my, the first man shot in Woodson at seven years old, and his brain splattered on my, on my shoes. I tell him that my father and my mother gave me my first crack cocaine package at eleven years old. I tell him that I slept at a bus stop bench as a teenager for several, several years. That way they know whatever it is that they're going through at home, I understand it.
Right.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Adlyse Bradley.
That's a lot, that is a lot to go through.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and those in attendance. My name is Adlyse Bradley. I have a street ministry called Hey Young Black Man, a street ministry. I also have a LLC called Hey Young Black Man, where I'm finishing up a program I created. I am here today because God warns me and shows me things, especially in regards to black-on-black violence. Example one, March twenty twenty-one, as I was leaving a shooting where thirty cases were counted, I heard God clear as day, "You are going to be going to more crime scenes. This is a warning, not for you to pray that shootings won't happen, because they are going to happen," end quote. And we see the increase of black-on-black violence last year and now. Example two, May twenty twenty-one, God put in my spirit about black-on-black violence in the school system here. I mentioned my concern in the comments of a tweet posted by the superintendent. So when the Heritage and the Minchville High School shooting happened, I was not surprised. There are three things God placed in my spirit for this meeting. Number one, we have to call black-on-black violence what it is. We must not refer to it just gun violence, because it's not just gun violence. Those in authority must call it black-on-black violence. Black people, we cannot get mad at other races that say black-on-black violence is a major problem, because it's the truth. We must get rid of this spirit of offense. Those in authority cannot fear what people will say when they call it what it is, because how can a problem be fixed if we're not being specific and honest about it? It is not, it is not time to be politically correct, and if we, things don't change, it will get worse. Number two, black-on-black violence is a spiritual problem. Ephesians six twelve says, "For we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this age, against spiritual hosts of wickedness in the heavenly places. Black-on-black violence will not be defeated using political tactics. Those over this city, as well as us residents, must seek God. In the name of Jesus, we must seek God for His wisdom, guidance, and solutions, because this problem needs all hands on deck." And number three, um, stop interjecting COVID when discussing black-on-black violence right now. COVID has nothing to do with this. We must not allow the devil to distract us from what he is trying to do, which is to take out our young black men and boys. God began revealing to me about Satan taking out young black men and boys through black-on-black violence back in two thousand and nineteen. And lastly, my prayer is that God will tell us that He hears us in this matter, that God will begin steering the spirit of city officials and those in authority over Newport News, that God will begin steering the spirit of the people of Newport News, that God will begin to download solutions to prevent black-on-black violence, and those in authority take heed to it. And most importantly, may we repent for the bloodshed in this city, and may we repent for any neglect and turn in a blind eye.
Thank you.
Wow.
That was good.
Devon Kelly.
That was my good. The truth.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, City Council, Mayor, uh, Ms. Tina Vick especially, uh, Marcellus Hertz, Mr. Jenkins. It was brought to my attention that City Council had received an email concerning an event that my organization, Not My Child, had hosted. And one of the people that was on that panel, he was not originally a person that should have been on the panel. Adrian Cook was, and Adrian had COVID, so I just found somebody that I thought would be a good candidate. I didn't know much about the background. So with that being said, I just wanted to let you guys know, I apologize for that email that was sent to you guys. I heard about it. It got sent to me, and I heard that you guys received it. But on another hand, uh, this event went successful. We found solutions. Uh, we, we are, um, I'm, I'm in, I'm mud in with this gang violence. I'm mud in because I'm one of them kids who mother had to stand in front of a man and tell them, you're not going to shoot my child. And when my mother did that, it caused me to change my life. It caused me to go back into my community and be very active. And I've been active very quietly until this peace rally. I've been getting phone calls, emails, people attacking me of, why did I invite certain people? Well, Ms. Vick know, I invited her, and she told me why she couldn't come, and I respect Ms. Vick. My, my mother was upset that she thought I didn't invite you, but I said, Ma, I invited her. She, I told her, I said, Ma, I invited her, and she was upset that she thought I didn't invite her. But anyway, uh, Chief Drew was at this event. Mr. Hertz, Mr. Jenkins was at this event. This event, I was texted three o'clock in the morning when the situation happened in Minchville. And somebody texted me and said, what are you guys going to do about the violence that's happening in the community? And I said, who am I? I'm nobody. I, I just host, I give away bikes, I give away book bags, I do trunk or treat, I do fun events. And then one of the people who was with my um organization said, D K, that's what they call me. She's a lieutenant colonel in the military. She said, D K, if you take my gun, you, and I'm in the middle of war, you just took from me uh what I can uh fight this war with. So what are we going to do? And that's when we became a meeting from that Minchville situation, we met every day strategizing of what can we start to bring solutions to our city, to change our city. And we came up with this peace rally. And if you were there, I brung in that room. A young man, he was on the Zoom, he was, he graduated from Herd High School, he's a judge. Uh, brung in that room Congressman, the, uh, like I said, the city, some of the city council members, the chief of police. I brung in that room felonies that just recently come home from murder uh to get in their back active in our community. We came in there to talk about how can we change what's going on? And the first thing we found out is, everybody looked at me and said, man, your story. Some mother, some father has to stand up and say, not my child. Somebody has to stand up and say, I know what my child is doing, even though you don't believe it. But you got to stand up and say, not my child is carrying a gun to school. Find out where this gun came from. Then uh also I was able to talk to some of these kids, and I shared with Chief Drew what the kids told me. They, they transparent with me. You know why? Because I've been there. I've been in prison, I've been shot. I, all the stories y'all heard, been there, done that. And I don't have time to talk about that now. I'm boots are mud down, I'm in the ground. I ain't asking for no funds, I ain't asking for no. All I do is, I be asking for you guys to come, to show up, to say, hey, we here, we hear y'all, we see y'all. And that's all I ever ask when I, when I call Marcellus Hertz. We have done several events that he have come to. Uh, Mr. Jenkins, I just met him, and he just came, and he seen what it was about, so.
Thank you, sorry, I hate to interrupt, but you're well, well over your time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I ain't know.
Okay.
But thank you, I really appreciate it. And if it wasn't, if my family wasn't in town for New Year's, I would have been there.
I know, you told me.
Please keep inviting us, sir. Um, that's all the cards I have. I just want to thank the number of people who have come out um in the community and willing to help us with this problem that we have. We will be reaching out to you, helping you with this process that we're going through to try and see what it is we can do as a community to stop this epidemic, another epidemic, and that is one of gun violence. So uh we appreciate uh everyone coming out, and it's very encouraging to me to see, because this is not a police problem. It's not a city council problem. It's a whole community problem, and it's going to take a whole community to solve it. So I'm, I'm really uplifted by what I've heard tonight. So with that, we're going to go into new business. Uh, Madam Manager?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
Madam Clerk? Councilman Jenkins?
Last month, I proposed that um we create a fund in Newport News of two hundred thousand dollars to support community groups involved in nonviolence. I explained that it was uh important to our city, it was time-sensitive, and that we should take action. And I made that motion last month and withdrew it and moved it to the work session. And today, we discussed nationwide gun violence, history of programs in our city, crime stats, the C N U study that's being done, uh, plans for grant money from the city, and a timeline that would say that in July, awardees would be announced. That's really not what I proposed. I proposed that the city take two hundred thousand dollars, either from ARPA money or from other funds available in the city, and create a program specifically for uh community-based programs fighting gun violence. And that that be done in a fairly quick manner of thirty days. Since we did not discuss that in the work session, I again move today that we, that we create a program with two hundred thousand dollars to fund local groups fighting gun violence and create an application process for that money to be dispersed as grants to qualified organizations and create this program within thirty days. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I do have an issue. We had a whole session to say something. Why, why wouldn't you mention it while we was in the co- what's that?
It was a lively discussion, and a lot of people had a lot to say, and we went far afield on many things. But as far as.
Well, let me say, the reason why I'm going, because I know we have to do something. And that's, that's no, no, I have no reservations about that. Been from day one, that's one of my priorities. But I do have an issue with, we have opportunities for conversation, and you don't say anything.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would just like to say on that um motion, I'm sorry, I hope you can hear, still hear me, you know. I've been uh very encouraged by all of you who are here tonight and all of the programs and all of the opportunities that we can have a chance to partner with. And I, I would hate that, I mean, I, I wouldn't want that, that this um motion that is way out of order for the, for the business of our city to um have a negative impact on what we're doing, because it's not that we're not wanting to support you all as an organization. Um, he's just out of order with doing it this way.
Any further comments?
I just, I, go ahead. I, I want to thank Dave again for bringing us to our um attention. Dave, I do believe that from the organizations that came tonight, um, I don't know anything about any of them that came tonight. And I'm open, I want to hear, I know the heed, because I knew Ms. Jackson, I love you. Thank you, good to see you guys. But I don't know, and I know Cameron, Mr. Bertrand's um organization, I know something about him because I've worked with him in the community. But I think it is due that every organization that came tonight, please provide us with information about what you do so that we can look at what you do and add that to what we're trying to do. We had an excellent work session today um for the plans that we have. And I think we want to help, we want to be able to give, but we need to have information. Because I don't have any information about what you do or the age groups or anything. So as I asked before at our last work session, please give, provide us with information. Um, I thank Ms. Winters for sending the information um that she sent after the last city council. It was helpful to read, to understand, so that we can make sure that you're getting what you need. That, that's my whole thing, is making sure you get what you need. Because if we don't give you what you need, then you'll be back saying, well, you didn't give me enough. So we need to know what you do so that we can make sure that we do that appropriately.
I, I think the, go ahead, yes, ma'am.
No, I just wanted to say, what I've heard here tonight is the beginning of a community coalition.
Yes.
You need to talk to each other. Your heads of each one of you, reach out to the other heads of the other people who spoke tonight. All of you have such good ideas and such good uh methods. You know how to talk to people who are, who have problems and are thinking about the violence. You know how to approach them, and that's what is going to work, is the community coming together and coalescing around some common goals, and the common goal is gun violence.
Yes.
So I urge you to talk to the other people, and I'm so glad I saw uh, Cameron, where's?
Mr. Archer.
No, well, I saw him, but I saw a couple others too. Getting the information so that we can call you together too.
Yes.
Because in numbers, there's strength, and in ideas, there's strength. And we can lick this thing. We can make it work with everybody working together. So no, I don't approve of us just getting two hundred thousand dollars and passing it out here and there. We need a community who's working together.
That's all.
I also like to make a comment. I think some of us are not understanding the democratic process. And, and that is what I think we demonstrated today at the work session, where we have a, a plan. All of us were elected and have a fiduciary responsibility for the funds that we have at our access. And for us to uh to just say, okay, here's two hundred thousand, no matter how good the, the organization may be or the deed, it has to be vetted. We have to be responsible to all of our citizens. And see, some of you shaking your head, you know, you've been there, you've done the work. I understand that. And we've been working on this for ten years. What some of you are doing, we've been doing ten years ago. It's not new, but it has to be consistent. And it has to have uh, for us to be able to be responsible for these funds. You know, I, I just don't understand that it, to me, is grandstanding, and I'm going to call it what it is. And I've been very reluctant to do that. But when you know there's a process and you see the city manager and the chief of police and assistant city manager working on a process to then throw a bomb into this with all this community that's come out and willing to help, it really gets on me. I'm voicing my opinion here. Uh, but we're going to continue to work. We're going to solve this problem. This community has had challenges before that we have undertaken, and it is something that the nation is dealing with, as was presented today. It's not just Newport News is experiencing gun violence. We're going to, all of us go to other meetings, professional meetings, and bring back best practices, some of which we have seen and are proving and helping our city, and it is a process. It is not something that's going to be solved overnight. And those of you who are doing the work and are frustrated that you can't get your hands on funds, I'm sorry for that right now. But we're not going to just haphazardly do things because somebody's trying to make a point or possibly a political stand. And I've got to call what I see. So with that, um, Councilwoman Scott?
I just still have one more thing.
Who's not here?
I'm, I'm, I just still have one more thing. For the organizations who are here, I just want to tell you, um, we have, as a city, since I've been on this council since two thousand and eight, and this is something that you need to know. Um, we've always have a community support budget, and you can apply usually within this month of January to be able to, um, nonprofit organizations, whatever you're doing. So uh I don't want you to feel, and some of you probably know about it already because I've talked to some of you about it. But um just this uh appearance of, you know, this two hundred thousand dollars is the only means to an end. No, we also have a community development block grant process where your organization can come and fill out to uh help uh get assistance with the nonprofit. So um, and also, we will be looking at the ARPA funds for funding, which may end up more than the two hundred thousand um uh dollars. But um we will be doing something, but um it's, I'm just telling you all and hope you don't get discouraged because the procedure is wrong tonight and totally out of order.
Uh, Councilwoman Vick, you're next.
Okay, just, oh, make one last comment. Okay, just one last comment, because what some, everybody needs to also understand, and like I said, nobody probably, I can't say nobody, but I am real passionate about this because of the fact that I've lost young people and people that I love dearly to gun violence. But also, you gotta understand processes of how things done, because our young people are our most precious commodity. And any program, some of you can have the highest of standards. No funding will be going out unless it's background checks done, because you can't have any kid with just anybody. So we gotta understand, there's processes that we just, you can't just give funds to any and everybody, but we want to make sure we're doing all we can. But there's protocols that have to be met in place, because yes, there are people, even senior education, that prey on kids. And any money that goes to a group, and an incident may occur, we're responsible for that. So let's just keep that in mind as well.
Well, I want to say that we have a motion and a second, and we gotta deal with that.
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion?
Yes, I would like to say a couple things. Throughout my life, I've often worked for other people. I worked for senior officers in the military, I worked for people in business, and there's a routine flow of projects and things that are getting done. There's also a point where your boss comes to you and says, "Hey, this is an emergency. We need to take action right now." At that point, you don't take your time doing things. It's all hands on deck. It's, "We've gotta take action now, and we've gotta do it right, and we've gotta do it professionally, and it's gotta be something that produces the right results," but we make it a number-one priority. A lot of times in the military, I've done projects that would normally take six months, and I've had to do them in a month, because the situation demanded that. And I believe that with the gun violence that we have in Newport News, it is serious enough that we need to take that measure. I believe that last month, and I believe that this month. I'm sorry if some people are offended by that. I understand that there are protocols that need to be made. That is one of the reasons for creating a grant program. I am not suggesting by any means that we give money to people who would not be qualified to get that money due to their background or due to the structure of their organization. The other thing that I want to address is the idea that perhaps this measure is out of order, because frankly, I kind of wondered about that after the last meeting. And from everything I could determine, under Robert's Rules of Order, when new business is called for, members can bring forth new business. And I can't see anything to stop me from doing that, to bring forth new ideas, and that includes business that may have even been discussed before. So I just wanted to throw out this couple of things.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Jenkins?
For.
Mayor Price?
Against.
Councilwoman Vick?
Against.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Against.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Against.
Councilman Harris?
I am for doing something.
Motion failed. Four, two.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury?
I said earlier the things that I wanted to say to you, and the strength that I see here tonight is so hopeful in seeing you create a coalition and a group who is ready to do something. So I'm not gonna say anything else. I want to thank you all for what you do, and for coming and expressing yourselves. And I wish you everything, if I can be of help with any of you, I will be glad to do so. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Yes, I wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight, and those who are online as well. I want to thank all of the groups for coming. I am really interested to know what you do, and that's why I'm asking for the information, because as we look at, we had a plan that was presented to us today. So as we look at what you do, that will help us to see if there are any gaps, like Dr. Woodbury was saying, so that we can see you do this and they do that, or maybe we all, you all can partner and do collaboration. One group cannot do it all, and we understand that, that one group, I don't care how good you are, you cannot do it all. But if we work together and we're collaboratively together, our capacity building is greater, and we can meet a greater masses of those youth and young adults that we need to meet. So I'm interested to know, because I want to see what you're doing in order for us to put it into the plan. The city manager, they have put this, this is on the front burner, this is not somewhere on the back burner for the city. This is in the forefront of what we're doing, and so I just want to say thank you to the city manager and our police chief, and those who presented today, because it took some work to pull that information together, but it helps us as a city to look at where we are, and where we need to go, and the other partners that we have together, so that we can make a greater impact on the community. So I want to say thank you to all of you all for coming tonight. With that being said, I want to give condolences to Florence Kingston, our director of development and loss of her husband George. George will be sorely missed. We knew, Tina and I knew that we had a dance partner. For any event that we have, George loved to dance, and so we knew that if the music came and George was there, we were gonna get a dance. So I just want to give my condolences to Florence and her family, and let her know that our prayers are with her. Also condolences to the family of Sergeant Gerald Luce of the Newport News Police Department. He passed, and he was loved, especially in the South Precinct, and my prayers are with the family as well. I would like to thank all of the city departments. We have not seen you since our holiday festival event, so I want to say thank you to all of our departments, especially to Mike Popilowski and Charlie Isano and all of the Parks and Rec staff. Thank you so much. Our city was absolutely beautiful, and you all got to see the video of that tonight. So I do want to say we appreciate you, because a lot of times, people don't know what happens behind the scene, but we get to enjoy all the fun stuff. I did get a chance to talk to Chief Johnson, and I told him that we don't, the police department doesn't tell their story enough, but they are I O S One accredited, and so I'm just very proud of our fire department. And I told him, I said, "You have to tell the story," because they do so many things. They do safety walks and things in the community that we don't even know about. But I do want him to know how much we appreciate the fire department, and especially the fire marshals that were there with that wonderful bonfire that we had down at Brooks Cross, and it was very nice. We did, Tina and I did, and I get on ice skates, but you can see, we did have a lot of fun dancing. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who made our city so beautiful and had beautiful activities for all of the citizens to enjoy during the holiday season. As we approach 2022, I do want you to know that we are going to start your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meetings again. The first one will be held on next Thursday, which is the third Thursday of the month. It will be held at Downing Girls Culture Arts Center at 6:00 PM. We are hoping that we will be able to go back to our meetings the second Thursday at Midtown, and then the third Thursday at Downing Girls Culture Arts Center. And so I look forward to seeing the residents. And I do ask that if you are coming to the meeting on next Thursday, please, a mask will be required throughout the whole meeting, and we will practice social distancing as much as we can. So thank you, and God bless, and I hope everyone had a good holiday season. Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and participating, and I hope that everybody continues to remain engaged consistently with everything throughout the year with what we have going on. Happy New Year to everybody. This is the first time I've seen some of our council members, colleagues, city officials since the new year, and I just pray that we have a blessed 2022, and that's all I have. Mayor Price?
Thank you. I want to also say happy new year and a healthy one to everyone for the upcoming year. I want to thank Parks, Recreation, Tourism, and Communications Department for what has just been a spectacular display and creativity throughout the city. The decorations in the city center and throughout the city have just been fabulous throughout the holidays, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback on that. Also, in regards to activities and things in the city, there are ambassador passes that are available in Newport News residents to numerous attractions for you to go free. Please look for a list of those. It's a great opportunity to learn about the city, what we have here, so that when your friends will not come to this city, you have places for them to go that you may not even know about. So first, learn about these places like Virginia Living Museum, Mariners Museum, all of these things that we have here to be able to share with your friends and relatives. As many of you know, I have a usual annual food drive. This is the sixth year, celebrating the day of service of Martin Luther King. I want to thank those who are co-sponsoring with me, Congressman Bobby Scott, Delegate Marcia Price, Sheriff Gabe Morgan, Police Chief Steve Drew, Riverside Health System, and the Virginia Unity Pride today to benefit the Peninsula Food Bank. We all know that the donations are down by about 18%. This is usually the second-largest funded food drive that we have through the year for the food department, so we want to make sure that there are various places where you can drop off food. They were listed in a paper today, in an article. So if you have food and you need it picked up, give the city, the mayor's office a call, and we'll try and see if we can get by if you aren't able to drop it off. We will be there Monday from 9:00 to 1:00. You're welcome to drive up, share in your giving. We'll be there to greet you, help you unload your food and/or donations. Also, you don't have to go out, make a trip, write that check to the food bank. They actually can buy food cheaper, which will make your dollars go further. So we also ask that you do that. Lastly, I just want to talk about vaccines again. What can I say? We're still increasing in this pandemic. The only way out of it is through vaccinations and getting your shots. So we hope that you will talk to someone you trust, talk to your medical person, talk to your family members who have had the shots and are doing well. To me, it's two groups of people. Those who have not been vaccinated, who are in the hospitals, in emergency rooms, and are dying. Those who have been vaccinated, who don't have as many symptoms, even if they do get the virus, they're not as sick, and they are not in the hospitals. To me, that's black and white, but it's your decision. But we hope for the health of all of us, that more people will start to get this vaccination so we can begin to live with this virus, which is gonna be with us for a while until we can handle it. With that, if there's nothing else, may what you say and do uplift the city of Newport News. We stand adjourned. Too late.[1784.48][1784.48]